Whoa. Good evening and welcome to the February 5th scheduled meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. The meeting is called to order at 4:42 PM. To access translation and Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you are here in Dejounte, you may pick up a headset for translation in the back corner of the room. The board is about to go into closed session, but before we do, we're here to listen to public comments on closed session items. Individuals wishing to speak on the closed session items listed. If you're here in the auditorium and you haven't already done so, please submit a WCC USD public comment card, which you can find on the entryway table, or if you're participating via Zoom. Individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. If you're accessing the meeting by phone, press star nine. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. There is no substitution of speakers. We alternate between Zoom comment and in-person comment. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. The items listed on the closed session agenda tonight are: A1 Conference of Labor Negotiators. A2 Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release Complaint. A3 Public Employee Performance Evaluation Superintendent. Is there any public comment on these items?
Yes, we have two public comment. Ms. Browning-Evans, can you please come to the mic?
Good afternoon, esteemed board members. My name is Bronwyn Evans. I'm a second grade teacher and one of the United Teachers of Richmond representatives for Murphy Elementary School. So with the guidance of UTR leadership today, the UTR members at Murphy have conducted a vote of no confidence in our current administrator, Principal Beth Miners' leadership. Ninety percent of our members-
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Yes.
You're free to speak if you so desire. We do request or would encourage you for items such as this involving staff to handle them off the microphone, but you may continue.
Okay, thank you. Ninety percent of our members voted in favor of the vote of no confidence with 10% abstaining, as detailed in the letter and ballot measure that I will be distributing to each of you today. So we're bringing this to you all today because we would like on the record documentation of the efforts of both Teamsters and UTR members to meet with administration and district leadership as well in order to address our concerns for the safety and well-being of our students, our families, our community at large. This letter that we have in our hands does not by any means contain an exhaustive list of the harms that this school has experienced under Principal Miners' leadership. And with that, we are formally and respectfully requesting that the board and the superintendent, number one, discontinue Beth Miners' contract for the 2025 through 26 school year, and two, require community input, particularly in the interview panel process, when selecting the next administrator. Thank you for your time. And would you please repeat what you had said to me before just now?
President Reckler, what was it that you said?
We don't encourage staff complaints like this at the microphone. We prefer to handle them off the microphone and we'd be happy to understand, you know, to hear the complaint, but you are free to make your comments.
Understood, thank you.
And if I may of the sound board, my, did you not hear me at all?
It's really fuzzy. I don't know how to say it.
So maybe the tech team can understand that that my voice was fuzzy to them. Is it better now?
Thank you.
Is it, I guess not. You can't hear me?
He's sort of, and it's a bit muffled for some reason.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for that. We're trying to work on the sound in here.
Great, thank you, President Reckler. Our next public comment is Karen Van Winkle.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Moses and President Reckler and Jamila, thank you for being here and our district school board. My name is Karen Van Winkle. I've been here for 26 years in the school district and then it's my second year at Murphy in Elsabranee. Under the leadership of Principal Minor, a lot of things have gone wrong at Murphy. We have detailed everything in our letter, but for example, you are all leaders there sitting and representing us. One of the comments that we often get is, well, no one told me that. And so I've brought to her attention that usually leaders go out and seek information instead of wait to be told. That's an example. And many other examples are outlined, including we didn't have a behavior matrix about what to do when a child does blank in the recess yard or in the classroom or anything. We didn't have anything agreed on until January. And that's unsustainable when you have a TK to sixth grade school. So respectfully, the leaders at Murphy School, we're all leaders. Every teacher, we are respectfully asking that Principal Miners' contract for the next school year is not renewed by the school district. We don't feel that she's a good fit for our community or our school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any more public comment?
That concludes public comment.
At this time, the board will recess into closed session. Thank you very much to all that made public comment. No distortion? Okay, good. Okay, we are gonna get started. So good evening to everyone and welcome to the open session of the February 5th, 2025 meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. The board is returning from closed session and I am calling open session to order at 6:35 PM. To access translation and Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. If you're here in this auditorium and you need translation, you may pick up a headset in the back corner of the auditorium. In a few minutes, we will begin the public comment agenda item. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the public, but is within the subject manager jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Please prepare now for public comment. If you're here in the auditorium and you'd like to make public comment, please fill out and submit a WCC USD public comment card. If you can find them on the table in the entryway. If you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of the item on the agenda. And if you're participating by phone, press star nine. After your comment card has been turned in, the cards are placed in the order received and we call on speakers one at a time, alternating between a public comment here in Dejounte and one on Zoom. Public comment generally lasts for one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. In the meantime, we're moving on to the rest of our opening procedures. Moving to B2 Pledge of Allegiance, please rise if you are willing or able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
B3 Land, Labor, and Body Acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenyo, Moicma, Carkin, Aluni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Labor and body recognition and acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Author Dr. Rochelle Rogers-Ard. B4 West Contra Costa Unified School District Board Anti-Racism Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism and the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit and implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCC USD education. To carry WCC education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment, where each student, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of the WCC USD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living these standards of anti-rism in our schools. Board approved, March 20th, 2024. B5 Role Call. Dr. Moses, will you please take role?
Thank you. President Reckler?
Good evening, I'm present.
Clerk Iniana?
Good evening all, present.
Trustee Hernandez?
Good evening, present.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Good evening, everyone, present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoy is absent. Trustee Espinosa?
Good evening, present.
And student trustee Wilson?
Good evening, present.
That concludes the roll call.
Great, thank you so much. B6 Report Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Moses, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, there is a report from closed session. In closed session, the board took action to terminate the employment of certificated employee number 123536 for failure to request a hearing following the receipt of a statement of charges that there exists cause to immediately suspend without pay and to dismiss a permanent certificated employee and direct the superintendent or designate to send out appropriate legal notices. The votes as follows. Clerk Iniana, yes. President Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, absent. And trustee Hernandez, absent. That concludes the report out.
Great, thank you so much. We're now up to B7 Student Performance, West County Mandarin K-8 School. And I believe that they are here to help us welcome in the new year.
Good evening, President Reckler, members of the board and members of the community. Today, we're incredibly excited to be able to present West County Mandarin for our student performance and I would love to invite Principal Dr. Peterson to introduce the student performance.
Good evening, turn on your microphone, press the little button at the bottom.
Okay, there we go. So thank you trustees, Dr. Moses, superintendent's cabinet for having us here tonight to perform. It's a great honor. Our students tonight will be performing a traditional lion dance as well as singing a traditional Chinese song called Ji Xiang Wawa, which means, one interpretation is auspicious child. These kind of performances are actually very embedded in our school program. As an IB school, we celebrate diversity. In fact, our school is diverse by design and we are also want to welcome the board members and Dr. Moses, if you're available, to come to our Black History Month celebration, which is February 25th at 1:00 PM at our school, which is another way that we celebrate cultures in our school. So I also want to thank Ms. Chase, our IB coordinator, Huang Lao Shir, and Mr. Wong for also their support as well as the parents that are here tonight to support. So without further ado, I look forward to introducing our first song, which is Ji Xiang Wawa, as I mentioned, and Huang Lao Shir will lead the students in this song.
Apologies for the brief delay. We are trying to get the camera on. It looks like we're ready to go.
Jie Fa Chai!
Okay, everyone, we are up to B8 public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject manager's section of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes, and should additional speakers remain at the conclusion of one hour, public comment may be extended. The time allotted per speaker beyond the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to speak, please submit a WCCUSD comment card, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of the item on the agenda. If you're calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another, and there is no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also make public comment again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after staff presentations. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. The same protocols recited above apply. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly, without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Is there any public comment?
Yes, our first public comment is Don Gosney.
At the last meeting of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, I was elected as the chair for 2025, so I'm back. And part of that means that whenever possible, I will be getting up before this body and before the public to give a standing report, as much as you will allow me to do. One of my problems, though, is that I've got a little conflict of schedule. Some of the dates you've picked, I'm supposed to be at a meeting in Martinez, and I get paid. That's part of my job, so I need the money. So, but I've already talked with President Reckler, and hopefully with the blessing of the board, we can make an accommodation so that I can still give those reports at least once a month, because the public appreciates hearing what's going on with their bond program, and I hope that the board appreciates it as well. Another issue, I appreciate you asking if we could hear you, but since you asked that, we can't hardly hear you in the back anymore, or on the side. It's just an issue. But also, another issue, a lot of people watch your meetings on Zoom. Except about 75% of the time, all that they are seeing is the speaker clock. That's just like we're seeing right now. That's it. We never see the speaker. We never see the presentations. Maybe we can do something, because there's a little button you can push, and that clock will be a very small thing up in the corner, and we can see your faces. We can see the presentations. We can see all the little kitties. It's just something you might want to think about and take a look at to see if you can make it work, because the public, I know, would appreciate it. I know that when I've had to go look back and see things that have happened on the videotapes, couldn't see them, because all I could see was a clock. Thanks a lot.
Our next public comment is Kumie Yanagihara. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. My name is Kumie Yanagihara, and I'm a fourth-year science teacher at Kennedy High School. And even though I'm an early-career teacher, I am tired of having to come continually to speak to the board to ask you to put students first. For the last three years, we've had students who are taking biology, chemistry, and physics on edge annuity with a teacher who lives on the east coast and assigns virtual labs. We are supposed to be fully staffed in the science department, but we got gutted one FTE three years ago, and the same has happened across other departments. We are also continually lowballed when it comes to the number of projected incoming freshmen, so we've always had to have teachers across other departments go on 120 at the beginning of the year to provide these additional sections. What we need at Kennedy and throughout this district overall is an increase in FTE, not only to be able to offer core graduation requirements, but also to expand our elective options so that students can take more science courses beyond just physics and biology. Several of us at Kennedy have expressed interest in teaching other electives. For example, I would love to teach environmental justice or public health someday, but it's just not feasible at this time, because we are all stretched thin to barely cover the core classes. And despite sitting on reserve funds, there's a vote tonight to cut FTE, special education support staff, and even more people who are vital to the functionings of our schools. Be so for real. We need better pay to attract teachers to this district, smaller class sizes, and more support services. We are already experiencing strains on public education at the federal level, and we don't need any of that here. Please do not approve these cuts. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Frances Cortez.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and community members. My name is Frances Cortez, President United Teachers of Richmond and homegrown teacher. I want to take a moment to appreciate the performance by the West County Mandarin school team. It was a little shocking to see that the teachers who helped put on the performance weren't included in that picture. So, next time that we do have a student performance, include their teachers as well who worked hard on that. But today, we want to talk about the item that's on the agenda today for the budget reductions. Let's hear about what's happening here tonight. The district is asking you to rubber stamp a plan that will go out or that will gut our schools, all while sitting on $162 million of reserves. They're telling you that cutting teachers, social workers, and special education services is fiscal responsibility, but I ask you, how is it responsible to abandon our students? This plan assumes that 128.9 vacant positions are magically filled when we know the truth, that educators are leaving in record numbers because of the district's low pay and lack of support for its staff. 562 educators have resigned or retired since 2002. We will hear a lot of numbers tonight, but here's the only math that matters. More cuts equals more vacancies. More vacancies equals more instability for students, and more instability equals more families leaving West Contra Costa Unified. The district cannot cut its way to success. Instead of hoarding reserves, use them to keep our schools whole. Instead of cutting educators, invest in recruitment and retention. Instead of balancing the budget on the backs of our students, demand that we spend today's dollars on today's students. Cuts to teachers, social workers, speech-language pathologists, instructional coaches, and literacy programs will impact low-income English learners and students with disabilities the most. I urge you, and I urge...
Our next public comment is Andrea Livinghouse. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. This is Andrea Livinghouse, UTR member. My comment will address the district's proposed fiscal solvency plan. This plan is rooted in a false narrative that the district is pushing, that we are in a financial crisis. In a week in which we learn that the Department of Education will likely be eliminated at the federal level, the future of public education is under attack, and this is the absolute last thing we need right now. The district believes we should cut teachers, special education staff, including speech therapists. I'm a speech therapist, and we've had vacancies for 20-plus years. And cutting vital student services in a district that is already rife with vacancies, despite hoarding away $162 million in reserves. We will lose students and educators over this. This is a choice the district is making. This is not a necessity. This is a poor demonstration of leadership, who pays lip service claiming to be anti-oppression while choosing to deepen the injustices our students face. Members of the school board, I ask that you do the right thing and oppose the district's financial solvency plan. Thank you for listening.
Our next public comment is Gabrielle Mishaletti.
President Reckler, Clerk Ngayana, and trustees, we are here before you today because the students and educators of West Contra Costa Schools urgently need change. We can't wait. We need to attract and retain educators and ensure stability in our schools for our students. I'm sure that we can all agree that our community deserves the best. Educators are leaving our district at an alarming rate, over 550 in the last three years. Fifty-seven of our members have already put in their resignation for the end of the year, and if patterns hold, that number will grow to 150 by this summer. These tumultuous circumstances put additional strain on the remaining educators and create chaos in the educational experiences of our students and bring additional training expense to the district, with estimates of educator turnover for unified districts running around $20,000 per educator. In addition to this expense, according to the district's PCN from January, UTR is currently affected by 129 vacancies. When multiplied by the district's per-member estimate of $147,000, this creates savings to you of almost $19 million on the backs of our members. I urge you to keep this in mind when you are told later in this meeting that we need to cut programs for our highest-need students to keep this district solvent, despite massive inaccuracies in the numbers being put before you. I hope during today's presentation, the numbers and analysis are actually specific to WCCUSD and not copied and pasted from San Ramon Valley's report. In bargaining, we will be bringing you proposals based on our members' feedback regarding what they need to succeed in their work and stay in this district. The answer is clear: our members need to be fairly compensated for their work to stay with this district. We need more manageable class sizes and supports to keep up with students' increasing needs. We need opportunities to bring in more educators, particularly in hard-to-staff areas, so we are not spread so thin. These proposals we will bring to you in the coming month were created by a team of approximately 50 of our members of different work groups and specializations from all across the district working together throughout this fall. The dedicated educators of United Teachers of Richmond look forward to coming to a contract that demonstrates how you value the students and educators of the West Contra Costa community and what you are willing to invest in the future. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amanda Foster. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Yet again, I'm speaking on behalf of the Vista K-12 Virtual Academy community. Our school went through the WASC accreditation process, and we were given a six-year accreditation based on our current model. The educational model this school district is actively trying to destroy. Fiscal crisis, fiscal crisis, budget issues. First, other people have mentioned the millions and millions reserve. Second, Vista can bring in students from neighboring school districts within our county and adjacent counties, but for some reason, people in this district won't allow that. We have an education model that some people want and others need. Other districts have asked for MOUs. Families have reached out to us. You are blocking students and then telling us we are under-enrolled. You seem to really care about money, yet you are blocking ADA from coming in. I'll say it again. You tell us we are under-enrolled, you are blocking students entering our program from neighboring districts who would bring in more money, make it make sense. The budget crisis stems from chronic mismanagement. But you know what? This feels bigger than a money issue. This feels ableist. This feels like adults are actively working against children with disabilities, neurodivergence, and school-based trauma for personal and political reasons. Thank you to my students, who bring me joy every day. I love them so much, and they are why I am speaking tonight. They deserve better from this district, so do better. Thank you for your time. Heed our pleas. Good night.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
My name is Sam Clear, and I am the organizing chair with the United Teachers of Richmond and a third-grade teacher on release at Siege. While I have been at Siege, we have never started a year with a full staff or kept a full staff throughout the year. Students came to the first day of school without a teacher or had to suffer from a revolving door of adults due to the district's current priorities. One parent even compared his child's educational experience to musical chairs. Unfortunately, the vacancy crisis impacts other schools all over the district as well. As I visited the sites this year, I witnessed the struggle that staff members endure every day. I was also devastated seeing students go to school every day without a teacher. Our district is not successfully recruiting and retaining staff members at our schools. Over 500 teachers have left the district within the past three years, and students currently suffer from over 120 teacher vacancies. Instead of receiving long-term solutions for our vacancy crisis, we face a severe wave of program and staffing cuts, which impact our most vulnerable students. We must strengthen the stability of our schools, and members of district leadership must change their priorities. We must make student-centered choices and provide students with the opportunities that they deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Masa Peterson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Masa, and I'm a fifth-year teacher in West Contra Costa. I strongly urge the board to find a better long-term solution to the budget crisis than to cut funding and positions at the school level. Doing so would create even more work for all the teachers and students and staff... excuse me. Doing so would create even more work for all teachers and school staff and worsen outcomes for our students. Additionally, cutting special education and speech therapist positions opens our district to liability, given that we can barely meet the legal requirements for students with learning disabilities as it is. You are lucky there's yet to be a lawsuit over access to special education or speech services. The board should elect to use the $162 million in reserves to meet the needs of students. At the end of the day, we are all here for our students and community, not revenues or budgets. Please listen to teachers when we are saying, "We cannot do more with less." We literally cannot. Previous speakers have argued to keep our schools whole, and the reality is, our schools are not whole. We have 128 vacancies, which is honestly ridiculous. We're considering cutting more positions. Which positions? How will cutting positions and cutting funding solve the problems that we've been discussing all year? Vacancies, declining student performance, these are particularly impacting our Black and Brown students and our low-income students. If you're committed to anti-racist policies and educational equity, as you said at the beginning of this meeting, you won't cut the funding. When you cut funding, our Black and Brown students suffer the most, our students with disabilities suffer the most, our English learners suffer the most, and your teachers are suffering. We are telling you that we are suffering. We deserve better, and our students deserve better. Do not cut this funding. Thank you for your time.
Okay, sorry. Hello, my name's Marie, and I come speaking to you as a parent and also a current SOP in the district. I brought my two kids with me tonight. They both have special needs, but they have been greatly benefiting from the special ed department. My son is going off here. Both of them, they are two wonderful children, love them with all my heart. They have been growing in leaps and bounds in the programs that you have set up here. I ask and urge you to please vote no on doing the budget cuts. My children's speech therapists are wonderful. They have really helped me in strategizing and helping them to communicate. Everybody wants their child to communicate, to be able to talk, to tell them about their day, whether it's using sign language... whether it's using sign language, picture boards, verbal words, body language. It's all a form of communicating. I just ask and urge you to please vote no, because when I was reading the report, it says that five SOP positions will be cut, and that is very devastating for me to hear as a current speech therapist. Thank you, sir. Um, I work, this is my second year working in the district. I love it. I'm over in the Cameron team, working with the preschoolers, and I also have two preschoolers myself, so it's like twenty-four-seven working with them. But it's a wonderful, wonderful job. And this parent stopped me as I was running into my office to say, "My child is speaking now. Thank you so much, and I urge you to vote no on this position." Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sierra Ackerman. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Um, I am also a speech therapist for the district, and I am also commenting to talk about my concerns about the loss of positions. I, you know, want to echo everything that everyone else has already said about the fact that the funds are there and that the money is there and that it's going to be devastating for our most vulnerable children. You know, you spent a solid five minutes at the beginning of this session talking about how much you care about equity. Take money away from our most vulnerable children. Also want to tell you a little bit about what it really looks like to be understaffed. We are badly understaffed. We have about fifteen therapists under for the entire district, I believe. Five of them and just four and a half of them just in the preschool department. What does that actually look like? It looks like kids never having, losing sessions because there's no staff and never having those sessions made up unless the parents chase after the district for months. It looks like kids not being given the means of communication. If they need a tablet to communicate, there's no one to do the assessments. I had one child, I referred in September twenty-twenty-three, who just got his tablet last week. It looks like kids who could communicate not being able to. It looks like we had three students walk off our camp, the campus of one of the schools I work at last year because the para staffing was so low. Now they want to cut even more paras. That's what it looks like on the ground. To have low staffing and to have vacancies. Also, I'm curious how we're even going to save money. If we have fifteen vacancies and you're planning to cut five of those, you're not paying those people. Where's the savings? They're already not there because they haven't been fired. I want to second everyone who says we need to hire and retain staff and provide all of the services that our wonderful children need and our wonderful families. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Karina Soriano Ponce. Please unmute yourself.
Um, good evening, board. Today, I'm here to advocate for our school counselors. Our school counselors are vital to our student success, providing essential support in academic career and social-emotional development. According to ASCA, which is the American School Counselor Association, school counselors are highly educated professional certificated individuals who help students succeed in school and plan their careers. They assist students in forming healthy goals, mindsets, and behaviors, fostering skills such as effective collaboration, perseverance, time management, self-motivation. So I urge you tonight to look at school counselors as the professionals that they are. They are working under the ASCA standards, in which they really try to emphasize to deliver a well-rounded school counseling program that encompasses academic, career, and social-emotional development. However, our counselors at the moment are overworked and not being compensated. They are working above the three hundred and thirty-eight ratio that the district has for us. And for context, ASCA recommends that counselors work with a maximum of two hundred and fifty students. So our counselors are already above that. At the moment, as you know, we're in the middle of a grievance. I urge you to take a look at it. We're spending money on a lawyer when we could really be compensated our counselors who are overworked and have above the number of students. I also want to take a moment to recognize all of our school counselors as this is a week to celebrate all of the work they do and a week where they advocate and educate our community on all of the work they do. Since I started as a lead counselor, that's the number-one question I get. What do school counselors do? They support the whole child. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Abby Morgia. Please unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Abby Morgia. I am one of the academic counselors at Deanza High School. Um, as Ms. Ponce mentioned earlier, recognizing National Counsel Appreciation Week, I ask our district school counselors that they, we do need your support. Board, um, this is my fourth year as a counselor. I ask to address the staffing and the workload for our students. There's definitely understaffing and burnout throughout the district. On behalf of our counselors, we are working over just, um, I am currently with a total of three hundred and thirty-eight students, while my coworkers currently are at three fifty-four and three fifty-five, way over the ASCA model, right? So school counselors will be understaffed at a total of five schools for entirely of this year, of this school year. Um, this, of course, affects our students, right? When we're burned out, um, we are understaffed. We do not support our students, especially with, um, you know, the needs that our students are in our district require. Please address these overdoses and set policies to protect counselors. I ask that the counselor grievance be discussed and voted as soon as possible. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Vista Virtual Academy parent. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks, sorry. Um, Dr. Moses and board members, tonight I want to strongly urge you to preserve Vista Virtual K-4 for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Eliminating this essential program will force families out of the district and weaken educational equity and undermine the district's ability to compete in an era of school choice. Instead of cutting a cost-effective program, we should strengthen it as a strategic asset for the district's future. Across the country, virtual schools are thriving. Castro Valley Virtual Academy is ranked the number-one public elementary school in California, online and in person. Virtual education offers smaller class sizes, flexible pacing, and a calmer learning environment that benefits gifted students, neurodivergent learners, and medically fulible children, and those homeschooling families looking for structured and certified teachers and curriculum. These students deserve a stable and supportive learning option. Cutting K to four virtual learning would be devastating. Families choose it because their children thrive in this setting, whether due to sensory sensitivities, social anxiety, bullying, or medical needs. Eliminating it would cause unnecessary disruption, forcing students back into an environment that doesn't work for them. Additionally, nearby districts do not offer public virtual alternatives, meaning families who need this option will have no, no choice but to leave the district and seek expensive private programs. Last year, Albany School District transferred students to Vista Virtual, proving that the demand is growing and existing. Instead of eliminating K to four virtual learning, the district should, one, maintain the current structure, one, teacher-pergrade; two, learn from successful virtual schools to refine and expand; three, promote virtual education to attract more families and funding. This is a defining...
Our next public comment is Heather. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. I'm here this evening. My name is Heather Harvey McNabb, and I am the proud parent of a second and a sixth grade at the Vista Virtual Academy. I'm also a WCCUSD employee, but I am here today in support of the Virtual Academy and begging you to reconsider making any more cuts to the teachers who are an integral part of the Vista team or cutting Vista Virtual Academy primary grades. All of our students deserve highly qualified and experienced teachers for their grade level and work being taught, and we shouldn't be sacrificing quality education for our children by continuing to make cuts year after year. WCCUSD has the reserve funds and is not giving our students and teachers the opportunities or the funding and resources to grow this extraordinary program. More cuts again force reorganization of teachers and change the entire school structure, again leaving our children to pay the price, putting their education at risk. You should be investing in our children's futures, not robbing them of a quality education. From day one, the amazing principal and phenomenal teachers have gone above and beyond to be nothing but loving, supportive, honest, compassionate with students and families. They have built lasting, meaningful relationships with our students and families, working together as a team, providing the best education and opportunities to our children while keeping them excited about learning. They provide opportunities not found anywhere else, encouraging all students to challenge themselves and maximize learning potential while still having fun doing it. My children have almost perfect attendance every year since joining. Their confidence and self-esteem has grown tremendously. Their increased knowledge and test scores are proof that they are excelling in every part of their education and constantly exceeding grade-level expectations is a constant reminder that this program works. I don't have to worry about absences, being sick, distractions in the classroom, or their safety on a campus. Their daily uninterrupted learning gives them more time than they would in a whole day on campus. Please save our school.
Our next public comment is Jeffrey Bean. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is Jeffrey Bean. I teach fifth grade at Shannon Elementary. I've been teaching in WCCUSD for the last ten and a half years, and I've been at Shannon for nine and a half years. Um, I'm concerned about the proposals you'll be hearing tonight regarding cuts to, to programs and teachers. Uh, the big problem that WCCUSD has right now is a shortage of staff. We don't have too much. I saw firsthand last year the effect that the staffing shortage had on my own former students when they went for several months without a, without a permanent teacher. Uh, it made me sad to see them there and struggling, and, um, I know that there are schools in, uh, other areas of the district like Richmond that are, have this problem year after year and no solution in sight. Um, I can't begin to think about what, uh, potential district employees see when they look to apply for jobs in our district and learn that the district is cutting staff. That can't have a good effect on recruitment. And when I consider the fact that families are probably leaving our district because of the shortage of staff, the problem will just, uh, cycle. Um, the thing to do is use the money you have now to adequately fund schools now, provide all schools with adequate staff, and then in future years, you'll still have the students who will bring in the money from the state to fund future, uh, future employees. Please, uh, reject tonight's proposal. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Our next public comment is Martin Jimenez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, this is actually Cristina Huerta. I'm using my husband's computer. Can you hear me? Thank you. So, yes, like I said, I, my name's Cristina Huerta, and I'm a teacher at Kennedy High School. I have been, uh, teaching at Kennedy High School for twelve years now. I'm very proud to be a teacher there and in this district, but unfortunately, this is not the first time I've had to address the school board about, uh, cuts that are being proposed to our staff. Uh, we have all chosen to work in education and to work for the communities in this district, but approving the cuts tonight is going to harm our schools, and of course, it's going to harm our students. How can we say that we want our students to succeed when we are reducing their access to support systems? At Kennedy, our FTEs keep getting cut every single year. I teach Spanish, and my world language department is now down to two teachers, two of us, for the entire school. We have students who are unable to take a language other than English until they get to junior year, which really impacts their access to attend a four-year university after high school. I'm sure there are other sites who have similar stories. That is very unfortunate. So I can't even believe that the board is considering making additional staffing cuts, especially when this district has one hundred and sixty-two million dollars in reserves. These cuts should not even be under consideration. Last year, it was decided by the district and approved by the board that scouts were no longer needed at secondary sites. Cutting such essential staff is being felt at our site deeply. So many of our classified staff is now having to wear twenty hats at once just trying to make our school site function. We have everybody trying to make sure that the school stays afloat, that our students are learning, that we provide a safe environment for them, but we cannot do our jobs if we're constantly worrying about losing additional staff. And we know that the ones who will feel it the most are our students. Vote no on budget cuts. The priority of this district needs to be to recruit and retain staff and not make us feel disposable. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Priscilla. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good, good evening. Uh, my name's Priscilla Lau. I'm a speech therapist, um, in WCCUSD, and I'm here to ask you to please say no to the district's plan. We already have over a hundred and fifty vacancies across the district, and cutting more teachers, special ed staff, and speech therapists is going to be disastrous. Current speech therapist caseload sizes and workload are already setting us up to fail our students and families. Based on a survey of data, K-12 SOPs in WCCUSD currently don't have the capacity to complete our work responsibilities within our contracted hours and are instead forced to prioritize. Over a period of two weeks, the data showed an average of three hundred and sixteen missed minutes of direct services for students due to completing other work responsibilities to stay in compliance with legal timelines for assessments and IEPs. Other SLPs prioritize serving students and were therefore consequently unable to complete an average of four assessments and adequately prepare for four IEPs within legal timelines over a two-week period. Our overwhelmingly large caseload sizes are directly impacting the quality of services that we can provide to students and our capacity to assess students in a timely manner. Students are being seen in large groups of six to eight in some cases to try to meet their minutes. Our limited capacity from the unmanageable workload we all face forces us to prioritize and make hard choices. Students are not getting the services and supports needed to help them be successful at school because of our overwhelmingly large caseload sizes and unmanageable workloads. Thank you for listening.
Our next public comment is Mooney. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm Daisy Musias, a student from Vista Virtual Academy. I have been here for four years. I'm speaking up for my teachers. These teachers are important because they can give us opportunities that most kids don't get, like AET math. This is my second year given the opportunity. We are lucky to get caring teachers, but the district should decide on taking them away, and we are getting the same opportunities as we were. In present, school doesn't allow us to get double to be in one grade and take a higher-grade class. Our teachers help us to challenge ourselves. We will get held back because of the teacher cuts. They have taught me to be responsible and to challenge myself each day because they believe in us. Please don't cut our teachers at Vista. Think about us. We are the future. Thank you.
Our next public comment is New Diamonds. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I am calling on behalf of Virtual Vista Academy. Um, I just wanted to say that I just really wanted people to rethink the budget, the budget cuts on this, uh, Virtual Academy program due to, it really is about the kids' education. Um, and my son has exceeded beyond my expectations, beyond the class expectations, um, due to this program. He is more attentive. He is more focused, and I feel like that should be the main priority for the school district is the kids and their education. If they're learning, if they're growing, if they're exceeding, then that should be the main priority. It shouldn't be cutting what is already working for the children. Um, if it isn't broken, then why try to make it even worse? You know what I mean? So I just really wanted to speak up for the, for the teachers and for other staff that are great. They, they actually, you know, are attentive, and they care, and they pour into the children there to make sure that they are striving and... are attentive and they care and they pour into the children there to make sure that they are striving and trying and just really, it's about the children and it's about their education. It's not about other things and other distractions. Also, there isn't any discrimination as well. You could just tell that they really do care about the kids' education. I feel like that is the main priority. So I really think that the school district should rethink the cuts and from what it sounds like they have the money, they have, it's just about what is the priority, what is the main agenda? And I feel like the main agenda should be the children and their education. So thank you for letting me speak.
Our next public comment is Jessica Ross. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ross and I've been a W C C U S D school counselor for eight years. Tonight, counselors, myself included, are grateful to be recognized as offering invaluable contributions in supporting academic, social, emotional, and career development of students. I do not want to take away the power of the upcoming resolution through my next statements, but I unfortunately need to acknowledge publicly the limitations of the district's support of us and the students we serve. In two thousand twenty-two, W C C U S D entered into a contract with United Teachers of Richmond, committing in legally binding language to provide our district's middle and high school students with a minimum of one counselor per every three hundred thirty-eight students. While that number is still above the American School Counselor Association's suggested ratio of two hundred fifty to one, it's an improvement on historical W C C U S D counseling resources. Unfortunately, the board has not upheld its contractual obligations, leaving counselors responsible for more than three hundred thirty-eight students per school at five different sites. They've also denied a hundred-page grievance, the district has, with two years of evidence in that grievance of district miscalculations and have used delay tactics to ensure that counselors will be understaffed through the entire school year. We're now scheduled for an arbitration hearing, but not out until the furthest they could hold it in May. There are only two explanations for the superintendent's business office and human resources response to this grievance. Either they're actively choosing to break the contract or they're explicitly miscalculating enrollment, likely leaving special education students out from receiving counseling services, something that they admitted to doing in their calculations last year at this time. I encourage you all, as a good math teacher would say, to check their work. Their actions have placed the board and the district in a losing losing legal quandary. To be clear, the district is funding us on its contractual responsibility for a total of point six F T E. We have the staff. We just need an approval. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mariana Cavalline. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, do you hear me? Okay. Hi, good evening, Dr. Moses and board members. My name is Mariana Cavallin. I'm a speech language pathologist and a parent in West Contra Costa Unified School District. To be blunt, these cuts are reckless and they're going to have serious consequences for our community. Our schools are already pretty much stretched to the breaking point. We have, like we've been saying, a hundred and twenty-eight unfilled positions. And now we're hearing that there's somehow a need to cut more. I'm asking tonight that you listen to those of us with the boots on the ground, focus on recruitment and retention and don't make an already unsustainable situation worse. Cutting staff is only going to cost the district more in the long run. Short staffing leads to increased legal liabilities like we've seen, especially in areas like special education where I am, where services are still federally mandated. Parents will file complaints, due process cases will increase, and the district will be forced to pay costly settlements and legal fees as a result. Beyond legal costs, overburdening remaining staff is going to lead to higher burnout, turnover, and it's going to cost more on recruitment, training, temporary contractors. So in all, what looks like a cost-saving measure today will create a financial and operational disaster tomorrow. So cutting staff is not a solution. It's a guarantee of higher costs, deeper instability and long-term harm. So as we've seen, this is not just harmful to students and staff, it's just a terrible financial decision. So please make your decisions wisely, invest in schools, prioritize recruitment, and please, please, we beg you, reject these cuts.
I conclude the public comment.
Thank you to everyone who came and called in for public comment. B nine, agenda review and adoption. Do any board members have any adjustments that they would like to make on the agenda? Hold on just one second. Yes, sir. You want to turn on the
Teacher, I'd like to make a public comment. Do we have time for one more? Sky Nelson.
Do it now?
Whenever you need me. Yeah, now is great. Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead. Hang on, we'll get the clock going for you.
Thank you. My name is Sky Nelson. I'm a teacher at El Cerrito High School in physics. I started teaching right out of college in two thousand one in Montgomery High School in Santa Rosa. And I taught for four years. The year that I left, the opening meeting, they told us we were cutting the budget by sixty percent over two years. So this is not new. I feel like I've time warped. I left the profession after that. Came back last year after sixteen years when my daughter entered high school to teach again, and I love it. I adore my students. I adore getting to teach them every day. Love being in the classroom. But it's like I never left. I mean, the situation is the same. We're just fighting battles about about budgets. And I know we're all on the same page. There's a power structure set up where you're trying, the board is trying to manage the budget cuts and the teachers are fighting back. Why don't we turn around and look at the source of the problem? Whether it's Prop thirteen or other systemic problems with unsecure funding. Turn around and face the upward slope and organize to get stable funding in our schools overall, rather than bicker about it at the local level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Okay, moving on now to B nine, agenda review and adoption. Do any board members have anything on the agenda that needs to be reviewed or modified? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. B ten, approval of minutes November sixth, twentieth and December fourth and December eighteenth of two thousand twenty-four. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll approve the minutes as presented. B eleven, resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, five, two, honoring African American History Month, two thousand twenty-five. Dr. Moses, you want to take that?
Rachel, this is your item.
Yes. Good evening, Board President and trustees, interim superintendent, staff and community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the West Contra Costa Unified School District acknowledges the month of February as African American History Month and encourages all educational communities, excuse me, to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities. Be it therefore resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District, in accordance with its policy and administrative regulation, shall display the Pan-African flag during the month of February and beyond.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Please go ahead, trustee Smith Folds.
Are we going to make a motion first and then comments or are we going to do the comments first?
Oh, go ahead. You can make a really, there was supposed to be questions, but there aren't any. So yes, please go ahead and make and make a motion.
I move resolution two, four, two, five, dash, five, two, honoring African American History Month, two thousand twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Great. So the resolution has been moved and seconded. We'll move on to comments. Does anybody have any comments on this resolution? Trustee Smith Folds, please go ahead.
I want to take a minute and highlight some of the work that the district does. This district has been paramount in moving the work of anti-racism. It's been paramount in highlighting African American, not only history, but the African American student population. And it is a job that's never complete, but you will find in this district, the O A S, the Office of African American Student Achievement, you will find that its director was paramount in getting the flag flown at every site, all of our sites for the month of February for the last three years. You will find an increase in the focus on making sure that we have black student unions or African American student unions on our campuses. You will find that we have had the first black male superintendent, permanent superintendent, and now we have a black interim female superintendent. You will see that we have passed the anti-slur policy in this district. We have passed an anti-racism policy in this district. There is a lot more that we need to do, but we are moving. So I want to take a minute and just recognize the movement that happens. We have an African American mayor in El Cerrito first time. There are things that are happening. City Council of Hercules has three African American members on it. There are things that we are doing. At one time, this board had a majority African American board. We are moving in a direction that's moving towards better. We are not there yet and we have a lot to do, but we are moving towards better. So I just want to take a minute to acknowledge that. I am complete.
Thank you so much for those comments. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will move on to a vote. We'll start down here at this end. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza, Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Niana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Moving now to B twelve. In recognition of school counselors.
Thank you. Yes, now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District recognizes and appreciates the invaluable contributions of school counselors in supporting the academic, social, emotional and career development of students. The district proudly celebrates National School Counseling Week, February third through seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll move to a motion. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? I'll go ahead and move it. I'm moving resolution two, four, two, five, dash, five, six in recognition of school counselors. Is there a second on this motion?
I second.
Great. Hernandez seconds. Are there any comments on this resolution? Well, I'll make a brief comment, which is that I really appreciate our school counselors and all school counselors and I have been thinking about counselors and the role that they've had to play in all of the natural disasters that we've had in California. And what really spurred me was, you know, obviously the horrible fires that we've had in Los Angeles and I read many you know, very touching statements from school, students and families about what has happened to them and the school community rallying for them, especially their counselors to offer aid, emotional support and help people get back on their feet. And so that was what I was really thinking about when I think of school counselors, but I also think about all the doors that they open for students, especially for me. My family had no idea how to apply for college in any way, shape or form, and our high school counselor really helped us to figure out how to do that because we had no idea. And so to Ms. Charlotte, thank you. You sent us on the path and sent me on the path and I was able to help my sister do the same thing. So I really appreciate that. And with that, any other comments? Go right ahead.
I want to take a moment to highlight one of the counselors at Hercules Middle School. Not to get ahead of the announcement, but he passed away and he was probably one of the best individuals that I've met in a long time. He was a grandfather to most of the students at Hercules Middle School and he was an absolute joy. He did more than his job title required, and I think a lot of our counselors do. But again, I'll wait for the superintendent to make that formal announcement in your report either next week or the week after, but know that counselors are invaluable members of the school community and he was definitely one. So again, thank you to our counselors, but specifically thank you to that titan that now has his angel wings. I am complete.
Thank you so much. And with that, we'll go to the vote. We'll start down here with the student trustees. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Niana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
In record as a yes, the motion passes unanimously. B thirteen, recognition of our student board trustees for their participation. So tonight, we honor student trustee Wilson, student trustee Espinoza, Jr. for your work here on the board. You have been a pleasure to have here, have really enjoyed listening to you and seeing the work that you've done and your plans for the future and I think you guys are amazing. I'll turn it over to the superintendent and see if the superintendent has anything more to add.
I just wanted to commend you on a job well done and appreciate your desire to advocate for your fellow students and to participate in this process and I've appreciated getting to know you and I look forward to hearing about the future, your future endeavors and I know you hold promise for anything you endeavor to do in your future. So good luck to you and thank you for your service.
And I'm sure board members would like to make comments. Would you two like to go first or would you like the board to make comments first? And then we do have some plaques and we're going to take a picture.
We invite all the rest of the boards to make their comments first.
Go ahead. We'll start over here. Anybody over here have comments for the
Um, I think one of the things that I value and you guys may seem superficial, but it's not. The way that you come and present yourself and the way that you dress and you walk in, you walk in knowing that you are supposed to be in this space and that is not easy to do as a teenager. So you have a confidence and it can, it shows from the way that you walk into a room. So I think that that's something that you should always remember. My father said, act the way you want to be and you will be the way you act. You always come in knowing who you are and I love the suits. It always looks like Easter. You always have your Easter suits on and it's always great and it shows a sense of respect to the position and the positionality, but it also shows that you took it very seriously. From the way that you guys interact, the way you ask questions, your level of curiosity and the want to learn was absolutely stellar. I think that's something that if you leave this board with anything, leave with a skill. And you have the skill of being curious and asking questions to leave better than you came and to have more knowledge than you had when you first got here. Now everyone who comes into your presence, you can teach them how to govern because that's what you learned here is the skill of governance. It wasn't easy. It wasn't supposed to be, but you managed it and you navigated it with class. I am complete. Congratulations.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you. I also want to acknowledge, you know, the possibilities when we're really opening up spaces to our youth voice. You know, really making sure that you guys are amplifying that you guys have demonstrated what opening these spaces up to like really listening to the input of our youth can make a difference in, you know, thank you for welcoming me on. You know, you guys have been here a little bit longer than I have. So, you know, I really respect that, you know, respect how you carry yourself. Respect the way that you guys are interacting and are taking leadership, you know, within your spaces. So I congratulate you guys and I do look forward to seeing, you know, what the future holds and knowing that there's many other youth that can walk behind you guys and, you know, really give to these spaces just as much as you have. So thank you.
I also want to say thank you guys for your service. For, you know, welcoming in into this space. You guys, like Clerk Niana said, you guys have been here a little longer than what me and her have. But I want to again congratulate you. You took up the challenge. It was not meant to be easy, but you dressed to impress. So those who will come after you will have to follow in the footsteps. Thank you again. And I can't wait to see what the future holds for you guys.
Well, thank you for the kind words to everyone on this board. I want to start by thanking the board and the cabinet for working with me with so many different topics and ideas. It's truly been a privilege to collaborate and bring forward to support students in this community. As we move forward, I'm excited to see how far all student congress can go this year. Even with the late start, I believe that we have the capacity to make real progress and change. Working alongside students to bring their proposals to the board has been one of the most rewarding parts. I really hope to see the climate activism proposal continue to be worked on and hopefully voted on soon. Seeing ideas and seeing them shape and be created from scratch is so meaningful and so impactful in so many ways. Serving on this board has been an incredible experience. It has given me the opportunity to not only bring my own voice and ideas forward, but also to uplift the voices of others. My hope is that more students in our community feel inspired to get involved, to speak up, to take action, and to shape the decisions that impact them firsthand. Lastly, I would like to take a moment to thank my parents, Craig and Kay, and the audience for their unwavering support throughout my time on this board. I wouldn't be here without them, and I'm deeply grateful for their encouragement every step of the way. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you to all the board trustees and even the assistant superintendents. They have helped me and Luke in every amazing way that they can, along with the trustees, making this transition not only more accessible and more feasible for us, but as well to, for us to gain something even more, to leave with more in this process. Thank you to President Reckler for always being there for us. And alongside with President, former President Smith Folds and new trustees, Niana and Hernandez and new superintendent Moses. I thank you all for welcoming us with open arms, for being so not only welcoming, but so helpful in just every single possible way. Words cannot truly describe what you not only mean to me, but what you have done within my life. Because if you were to tell me like three years ago I would be doing this stuff, I would have called you crazy. I would have never expected myself in this kind of position. But and I thank God every day for you guys and what you guys have been able to not only do within my life, but what you guys continue to do for our district and out in the public as not only elected officials, but as human beings as well. I would also like to give my sincere thanks in just doing this journey with Luke. You are very smart. You articulate yourself very well, and you know your stuff. You have been not only a great helping hand in this process, but I wouldn't choose anyone else to do this journey and road with anyone else. And I would also of course look to thank my family, my dad and my mom and my little sister, my mom and grandma. They have been not only been the rock of my life and keep me going every single day to do this stuff, but seeing how this district has served us as not only family, but also as former students as well as creations, products of this district. It has been truly an honor and a blessing, and I thank God every day for that. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we do have plaques, and I'm going to just hold it up like this so everybody can see at home. Both plaques say in recognition of your leadership and service to the students of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. And we're going to take a quick picture, so let's go do it. Okay, C, business items consent. Do any of the trustees need to pull something from consent? No? All right, seeing nothing. We'll take a vote on consent. Student trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk Niana?
Yes.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes, business items consent is approved unanimously. Okay, D, superintendent communication. Dr. Moses, this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. We could bring up the presentation. We'll be sharing with you the information that was prepared for our last board meeting, so if dates are a little off, please forgive us. We still wanted to recognize the slides. Myself and the cabinet would like to take the opportunity this evening to share with you some of the things that are going on around the district and some events that have taken place. So we'll get started with the presentation. Next slide. We'd like to acknowledge the city of Hercules. Something very exciting happened last weekend. Hercules held their very first Lunar New Year Parade. It was a festive event. It was covered by media. I actually saw us on Channel 2. And that was largely possible because of the community effort, but also because of the participation of our schools. So I want to say congratulations to the city and congratulations to our schools in Hercules for a job well done, celebrating the new year. Next slide. We'd also like to highlight the education fair that took place January 25. This was a combination. This was an event that was a collaboration with Go Public Schools as well as our district in order to share the offerings and the offerings in our city and also programs that we highlight for our schools. So we want to recognize the Hercules School Band that performed and Penole Middle. Sorry, can't see all the slides. I'm not sure if there's an issue for everyone. But we had several of our schools attend and showcase our students and the hard work of our staff and the great school programs that we hold. Next slide. Shout out to Sheldon Elementary School. We were fortunate to share in their Growing Together program. It's an organization that comes in to offer nutrition and gardening classes for all students at Sheldon. We're really proud of the program, and we wanted to shout them out today. Congratulations for a job well done, Sheldon Elementary. I also want to acknowledge that they have fresh produce at Valley View Elementary, so shout out to Valley View as well. During the month of January, myself and several board members performed visits at our schools. And we wanted to shout out the schools that we had the pleasure of visiting this past month. That's Chavez, Downer, Murphy, Olinda, Ella Hurst, Stewart, Shannon, and Penole Middle. I wanted to share some of the footage that we got at Ella Hurst. Their students are hard at work. They showcased their outdoor education, their media production, and their future writers. It was a great visit to all of our schools, and we're excited to continue that practice, not only to learn about what's happening across our school district, but also to hear from our school staff and community members regarding their, their programs and their students' achievements. Next slide. We are celebrating this month. Fifteen substitute teachers completed the credentialing process last month and are now eligible to become full-time teachers in our district. So congratulations, teachers. We are so happy you chose us. I'd also like to highlight that we are also invested in a pipeline initiative grant through the Delpi program. We have a partnership with UC Berkeley to also grow our own administrators within the district. We are proud of this partnership, and we received an award so that these educators can receive this education and training at little cost to themselves and return to our district to serve our students and our communities in a larger way. So congratulations for those who are participating in the Delpi grant and shout out to our cabinet members who were instrumental in ensuring that this grant happened. Next slide. We'd like to share the progress of our reading difficulty screener, sometimes called the dyslexia screener. SB 114 is an education omnibus trailer bill that calls for a screening tool for all California schools to identify students having difficulties with reading early on in order to provide, provide support to those students early and often in order to support literacy across the state. So I just wanted to share the timeline here that we are in the process of working with a committee to select a screener for this process. And we will also offer opportunities for our teachers across the district to learn more about these screeners and have input as well on the selection process. We plan to bring recommendation forward in May and that the process will continue so that by June of 2025, we will adopt a screening instrument that will be approved for use in our schools. So we're excited about this work, and we wanted to share that with you. We anticipate implementing the screener in the fall of 2025. Next slide. Hercules Science Building, we will have a ribbon cutting ceremony tomorrow. Shout out to facilities and shout out to the Hercules community and the students that will benefit from this new space. Tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. at the Hercules Science Building, we will have a ribbon cutting ceremony, and everyone is welcome. Next slide. We'd also like to remind our community that the Richmond Promise Scholarship is open and that this scholarship is offering 1,500 per school year for, with at least four years of funding guaranteed for our students who are qualified for this opportunity. The deadline to apply for Richmond Promise Scholarship is Friday, March 14. We encourage all students who are looking to attend college to apply for this opportunity for financial support in their college endeavors. Next slide. We are under, we are undergoing our new family enrollment at this time. We want to remind everyone and ask everyone to remind community members as well that open enrollment is happening. We have a QR code on this slide. You can also find this information on our website. Please spread the word about our wonderful school so that we can work to get our community members enrolled to start the school year with us for the 25-26 school year. Next slide. This is the same information in Spanish. Please share as needed. Next slide. And we also want to publicize our transitional kindergarten enrollment as well. This enrollment is open, and you will register at your school of residence. And there's information on this slide that shares the documents needed for full enrollment. Please enroll so that we can plan accordingly and welcome you in the fall. Next slide. And this is the information in Spanish. As always, we'd like to remind our community of opportunities to engage. We are invested and focused on increasing our community involvement, especially through our parent advisory committees. This slide highlights the APAC, the ASAT, the DL cap committee, and the MDAC committee with descriptions of what the work that is happening there. This next slide shows the CAC, which is our Special Education Community Advisory Committee, and the DLI PAC, which is for dual language immersion parents. We'd like you to find a committee that fits your needs and, and show up to the meetings as publicized to share your ideas and be a part of our decision-making across the district. Next slide. Two more committees, the CBOC and the 7-Eleven Committee. If you'd like to be involved in knowing more about our facilities and bonds program. Next slide. And that concludes the superintendent report. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. And we will move on to our action items. The first action item is E1 Fiscal Solvency Plan.
Thank you, President Reckler. I believe that is my item. Board trustees, at our last Board of Education meeting on January 8, as a discussion item, we presented a plan for fiscal solvency for the 25-20 through 27 school years. I want to just review the summary with you. Based on, that based on current projections, we must implement a $13 million reduction plan in order to achieve a positive, in order to achieve a positive budget certification for the 25-26 school year. Although our current budget meets the standards of positive certification, it relies heavily on over $35 million in contributions from our Fund 17 Reserve in order to address the structural deficit that we're currently experiencing across our budget the next two years. We are in a position where we need to address this fiscal uncertainty to ensure that we can continue to meet our financial obligations in the current year and the subsequent two years. To address these concerns, we've, we outlined on January 8 a reduction plan that demonstrated our need to reduce 7.2 million in potential cuts in the school year of 25-26 and an additional $6 million in reductions for the 26-27 school year. We have provided the information for your review, and it is now time to weigh in with your consideration. While the minimum required reductions are 13.2 million, these reductions must extend across the next three fiscal years in order to maintain fiscal stability according to our current projections. And in addition to these reductions, we continue to rely heavily on reserves to cover. And in addition to these reductions, we continue to rely heavily on reserves to cover our annual costs over the next three years. It is due to this reality that we are asking the Board of Trustees to approve the fiscal solvency plan as presented on January 8th to address the ongoing structural budget deficit. At this time, I will ask if there are any questions by the board. That concludes my review of this item for action this evening.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Okay. Does any other board have questions on this item? Trustee, Student Trustee Despinosa, go right ahead.
I'm trying to think of how I would like to put this question into the best way I can, but I guess just to ask it in more simple terms, is there like any way or chance this solvency plan could be extended for like the next week since we had our meeting that was scheduled for last week canceled? Could this be like extended for next week to like determine if there's like any changes that could be done?
Thank you for the question. The reality is, we were under a deadline to have this decided last week and so we have missed a deadline set forth by the county. We're trying to ensure that this can be resolved this week and we do not anticipate any changes in the budget that would change the need to move these reductions forward.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Please go ahead. Trustee Smith Folds.
Dr. Moses, can you speak to the $162 million? And explain what that is, where it comes from, what it looks like?
Thank you for the question. I cannot explain that figure because it's not a figure that is an accuracy in our reality. I think I'd have to ask our union officials how they're calculating that amount. The reality is currently in our reserves, we are holding $37.63 million and the current plan is exhausting most of that in order to allow us to meet our annual fiscal responsibilities.
Are there any other questions on that side? Oh, okay, I have a question. I'd like to address the template because there have been some questions about the template that was used to make the reports. Would you be able to speak to that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for asking the question. I also have heard allegations that this perhaps could have been patterned after San Ramon's plan. The reality is the creation of a fiscal solvency plan has to be based upon the actual budget in the district. Those are our numbers. Those are our ideas. Those are our realities. I do want to share that the template, the form of the template, was actually patterned after San Ramon. That county, that superintendent shared with all of the Contra Costa County superintendents his template as a model for how to present this work. We did use that template to present our information as well as some of the statements that are generalized across the state of California to describe the fiscal situation that we find ourselves in in the moment. There were no areas of plagiarism as in this actual report, only pertains to the needs of West Contra Costa, the budget projections for West Contra Costa, and the recommendation for reductions that makes sense in this moment for West Contra Costa in order to satisfy our need to have a fiscal solvency plan that will allow us to have more stability in our budgeting over the next three years.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any common... Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the fiscal solvency plan for 2025 to 2027? Okay, seeing none, I will move the item to approve the fiscal solvency plan for 2025 to 2027. May I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Are there any comments on this item?
Yes.
Point of order. Point of order. You need to do public comment. It's an action item. We do public comment after the presentation.
Didn't I ask for a hold of comment on the item?
Sorry, I may have been in the restroom.
That's okay.
Was I in the potty? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You, thank you. If I could ask, can I have the timer up for two minutes? That's fine. No, I need all the corrections. Any help is appreciated. May I have the timer up for comments from the board, please? Thank you.
So, I'm aware that academies at high schools receive a specific budget to spend at that academy for activities and whatnot. At Ellis Street High School, the ITA Academy is receiving way more funds than they need and the teachers are aware of this, but they know that if they don't spend the money, that money will be reduced. So what is happening is they're finding any way and every way to spend that money so their budget is not reduced. That money doesn't need to be spent necessarily. I believe that we need to look into our academies throughout West Contra Costa Unified School District and go on a deeper dive on how the funds are being spent and if they actually need those specific funds. There's a lot to talk about. These are kids talking, but oh, why not just do a $1,000 scholarship for each student in the class? Because there's about 90 students in the ITA Academy graduating, including myself, at Ellis Street High School. I can't speak for any other academy, but I'm aware there's a lot of academies and I want to have a deeper dive into how these funds are actually being spent and not just spending them because they want the same budget the next year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, well, I have a couple of closing comments on this. So first, no one wants to do this. No one runs for office to do this. No one works here to do this. This is an absolute necessity. We're staring down dire fiscal situation and the people up here are going... I don't know what they're going to do, but I know what I'm going to do and it's to literally save the district. This is not a joke. Why? Declining enrollment, more importantly, attendance. Attendance number one over enrollment. So even though we're in a very difficult space right now with Mr. Trump and his actions, we have got to encourage kids to come to school every day. We love your kids. We want them here. We're going to keep them as safe as we possibly can. We're going to support them in every way that we can. And it's not about... Unfortunately, the way California calculates, it is about money, but it is about their health and well-being and their ability to live a wonderful, successful life. And if you come to school and you're educated, you'll have much more of a chance to have the life that you want and deserve. You'll be open to possibilities. So that's job number one, is everything we can to work on attendance. I understand it's very difficult right now. The other thing, I just want to talk about sourcing. If you're using a template, anything, put your sources down. It's okay. People have better ideas than we do. Give them credit for it, that's all. And with that, those are my comments on this item. And now we will go to a vote. We'll start down here with Student Trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Student Trustee Espinosa.
No.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Inana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Forgive the pregnant pause. You asked for comments and I was still kind of formulating it in my mind. Is it okay if I say one comment?
Sure.
I think that this is the part of the board job that is the hardest because these numbers are attached to people in our district. I think that one of the things that we have to do is we actually have to come together. I think that we don't have a choice, but we have to figure out how to work together. I think that we were on the right track when we were doing the budget subcommittees. I think that that gave us a chance to everybody sit at the table and get an understanding and a learning about school budgets. School budgets are the most complicated things in the world, I believe. I don't think there's anything more complicated than looking at these budgets. The vote is always difficult because it feels like you're trusting one source over another source and that should never be the... It should never be that way. It should be everybody coming together, same numbers, same intentionality, same goal-setting, same outcome. So we have to figure out how to get that right in our district. So moving forward in times of tribulations, because they are here, we will be able to stick together. So with that being said, I want us to start coming together and I think the way to say that is to abstain, get together, and then let me move forward with that positive vote because we're as one. So abstain. I'm complete.
And I'm a yes. Vote passes. Three yes, one abstain. Student Trustee Wilson is a yes and Espinosa is a no. Okay, E2 Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services Plan.
Mr. Fleishman, I believe this is your item.
Thank you very much. We are here to present the CSIS Plan or the SIGDIS Plan as it is now referred to and I'd like to introduce our CSIS Coordinator, Christine Hatcher, to present to the board.
Good evening. President Reckler, board members, Superintendent Moses, community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Christine Gant Hatcher and I am here to present our Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services Plan, here to refer to as the CSIS Plan. I get the next slide, please? The next one? Thank you. Are you running the slide presentation? I'm sorry, can we go back one? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm coming together, I'm sorry. It's a little late in the evening for me. Thank you. All right. Our district has been identified as being significantly disproportionate or SIGDIS. This means we must design and implement a plan to address equity and educational access for students to prevent further disproportionality. And please, if at any time I start to go too fast, please just let me know and I'll slow down. Next slide. I know there's a lot of text on there, so I'm trying to summarize. Our interest is to address student need, to find effective strategies that will prevent further findings of significant disproportionality for our district. Next slide. Thank you. This slide represents the four phases of the programmatic improvement process. The plan requires that we apply a cultural lens to addressing the needed improvement as well as academic adjustments. We are in what is known as the third phase or the third cycle of our CSIS planning. Though we were notified in March of 2024, I want to be clear that this plan, the CSIS Plan, is not a special education plan. It is a general ed plan and its intention is not just to mitigate or lessen the impact of the significant disproportionality, but to actually disrupt what the identified disproportionality is. Next, please? Thank you. The ratios that determine the significant disproportionality and the area that is calculated annually as previously mentioned by the California Department of Education. And you can see in this, going one slide back, our significant disproportionality and a risk ratio was for white students, over identification of white students to separate schools. This plan is designed to address the success gaps identified through data collection. Academic data, quantitative, special education and district-wide data, and qualitative stakeholder data is considered. These resources that are allocated, or we will be allocating, excuse me, resources to support the plan's activities. This plan is not designed singularly by me. It is designed with the support of many stakeholders as are identified on the slide. These same stakeholders will participate in quarterly meetings where we progress monitor the CSIS Plan over the implementation cycle, which ends September 30th, 2026. Keeping in mind both the root causes and the significant disproportionality categories, SIGDIS categories, criteria for the target population was established by the CSIS team to primarily, but not exclusively, support students who are in the SIGDIS-impacted subgroup. And on the right-hand side are this year's or this plan's focal schools, so Fairmont, Harding, Kensington, Madera, Miravista, and Coramatsu Middle. Within the focus schools, our intention is to provide direct support to students who meet the three criteria that are articulated on the slide. This next slide details the estimated number of students that the plan will support. Serve and support. Root causes were identified based on the data collection process and stakeholder discussions that occurred in Phase 2 of the CSIS planning process. Outcomes and activities were designed to address the identified root causes. Root cause number one was determined that inconsistent use of inclusive and culturally responsive multi-tiered systems of support supports, staff training, positive behavior strategies, limited schools' abilities to fully support the whole child in academics, behavior, attendance, and social-emotional learning. Our desired outcome, our measurable outcome, or the measurable outcome that was identified was by 2026, the district will improve MTSS and Section 504 support to ensure consistency and cultural relevance, reducing separate school placements for white students and suspensions for African-American students by 5%. Root cause and measurable outcome number two. Inconsistent policy enforcement and under use of Section 504 plans contribute to the overplacement of students in separate settings and higher suspension rates for Black students. By June 2026, the district will enhance our multi-tiered systems of support to provide consistent, culturally-relevant support, reducing separate school placements for white students and suspensions for African-American students by 5%. Root cause and measurable outcome number three. Lack of transparency and engagement has led to distrust, especially among Black and white families. Implicit bias further limits authentic parent partnerships. The Equity Initiative that we've identified in root cause and measurable outcome three should... The equity initiative that we've identified in, in root cause and measurable outcome three should focus on reducing bias and building cultural proficiency to strengthen relationships and improve communication. By June 2026, the district will strengthen authentic parent engagement, increasing participation, satisfaction, and trust. Success will be measured by higher involvement in parent groups, 75% positive feedback on engagement sessions, and improved communications reflected in surveys. We wanted to be sure that our measurable outcomes align while ensuring that we are addressing the needs of students as well as supporting staff in, in the goal of meeting these needs, meeting these articulated needs. While measurable outcome number one addresses the need for consistent, inclusive, and culturally responsive support systems to ensure equitable student outcomes across academics, behavior, attendance, and social emotional learning, activities will include, but are not limited to, staff training in the area of ACES or adverse childhood experiences, which considers the potential role of trauma on student behaviors. It also supports implementation of positive behavioral intervention system plans, which include alternatives to suspension and family engagement. And resources will be dedicated to staff training and onsite student support services. Measurable outcome number two includes, but is not limited to, the, addressing the need for consistent policy enforcement and proper use of 504 plans to reduce student segregation and racial disparities in discipline. Activities will include staff collaboration in creating a more staff-specific, multi-tiered system of support triangle to outline resources for student needs, not just at tier one, but tiers two and three, to also support the implementation and progress monitoring of the social emotional learning MTS framework at the six sites. And resources will be dedicated, again, to staff training and onsite student support services for social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Measurable outcome number three addresses the need for transparency, cultural proficiency, and bias reduction to rebuild trust and strengthen parent-school partnerships, especially among black and white families. Activities will include, but are not limited to, similarly to the measurable outcomes of number two, activities, excuse me, site-specific works, but site-specific collaboration to create an MTSS triangle to outline resources for student needs at tiers one, two, and three. It also will support implementation and progress monitoring of SEL as well as academic frameworks at the six sites. And again, we will be dedicating resources to staff training and onsite student support services to ensure and improve illiteracy proficiency. This last slide just details or, or shows the next steps for the implementation of this plan. I didn't change the dates. I'd planned to do this last week, but I appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. We will be submitting pending the board's decision to the California Department of Ed for more approval. And then our team begins the work of implementation and supporting the six sites that were identified in the presentation. And between now and September 30th of 2026, we will be progress monitoring those activities that were articulated in the plan. However, I also want to say that as the needs of the students at the sites may change, we reserve the right to amend the plan to make sure that we are adequately addressing student need. And that is the end of my presentation.
Okay, thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. We'll go to questions. If anybody has questions, we'll go to three. Three each. None? Okay, I have a, I have a couple of questions. So I believe the last time the plan came forward was in 2023. Is that right?
The last CCS plan?
Yeah.
There have been a couple. So there was a CCS plan in 2021. Each plan cycle, and I'm gonna actually call on Superintendent Moses to correct me if I get this incorrect. I believe it's a 27-month cycle. So there was a plan in 2021, which ended in September, September 30th, 2023. There was a 2022 plan, which ended September 30th, 2024. Sometimes they will overlap depending on the annual determination by the state. So come this March, March 2025, we will receive another letter from the state with an annual determination, which may be something very different than the one that we received in 2024. But if we are tracking the data, and the state actually does provide this, and I'm gonna actually look to Self 导导 Fleishman to jump in and help me if I misspeak. It is looking like we have an increase in special education referrals for African-American students under the classification of other health impairment. The CCS plan that closed out September 2024 was over identification African-American students under the designation of emotional disability. We had, and suspensions of greater than 10 days. So we're just kind of tracking to see. So all the data that we actually receive from the district can kind of help us predict what our possible annual determination will be in March.
Okay, so what happens to the schools? Like, I just found a plan for 2023. I can't remember anything in 2024 coming forward. But, you know, I'm looking at the plan for 2023. Can either of you answer, like, what happened with that work? Is, were those schools corrected? Do they, do you just do the work and the time expires and it's like, okay, we're done? Or like, how, how does this overall process work, if that makes sense?
I think the intention, President Reckler, is to build the capacity of the school sites to meet the needs of their students. So if, for example, there were focal schools and we were looking at suspension data, and we saw a disproportionate number of these schools or, or the disproportionality was around suspension for African-American students of more than 10 days. There was a process that the CCS coordinator and team went through at that time, which included looking at suspension data, could be looking at attendance data, looking at academic data. And a plan is formulated. So if in the plan, the activity was to provide onsite counselors, if it was to train teachers in adverse childhood experiences, if it was to do a concentrated outreach to parents to increase attendance, the, the, the plan or the intention of that is to build the capacity of those folks that are charged with implementing that work, so that when the, when the money goes away, it's not the money that's driving the change. It's actually the knowledge of the people that are there.
So had it not been corrected from 2023, would it, would we expect to see it in another year?
We would expect to see a decrease. Using the example I just read around suspension, we would expect to see a decrease in suspension. We might expect to see an increase in attendance. We would expect that surveys that went out to show increased satisfaction with the work that the school is doing with, in, in terms of parent engagement, as, as examples.
Okay. And then, what, more specifically, what would interventions look like for white families and students?
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating that?
What specifically would an intervention or professional development or working with white families and students look like?
In the previous plan?
No, for the one that you're presenting.
For this one?
Yeah.
Some of the things that we have identified is providing mental health counselors onsite. We will be providing academic support providers, working with students. The three criteria, wait, let me go back to my, I printed the PowerPoints, I won't ask that, we bring it up again. So if you, if I can beg your indulgence for just a moment. The three criteria that we use to determine who the focal students were. Chronic absenteeism, below grade level proficiency in both English language arts and mathematics. And there was a documented incident, meaning maybe there was a referral. So to address the absen, the chronic absenteeism, we are doing an intentional engagement of parents. What are the barriers to, to attendance? What are the things that we can do to mitigate the impact of chronic absenteeism? What we do know is that absenteeism 100% impacts academic achievement. So if we can, if we can increase attendance, then we can increase academic outcomes. Time in front of a teacher, a good teacher is going to, to improve the academic outcome for students. We know that research supports that. Documented incidents, if students are struggling, not just academically, but socially emotionally, then we want to make sure that there are people onsite to help them develop mechanisms to address whatever it is. Again, that might be a barrier to their achievement. I, I think I saw your hand up, so I just want to pause for a minute. Okay. Yes, sir.
President Reckler, I'd, I'd also refer back to slides 17, 18, and 19 in the, in the presentation, give some of the more specific examples of some of the interventions that are gonna be happening at the school sites. For example, there's, there's for activity 2.1, provide professional development for specific to the effective implementation of discipline behavioral matrix that contains MTSS implementation. Then activity 2.4 talks about tier one and tier two interventions. So some of those pieces give a little bit more of that specificity, I think, that you were asking for.
Okay, thank you very much.
And certainly, if you want more detail, I can always send you a copy of our action plan development that we've submitted to the state.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that offer. Okay, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion which would be to approve the district's comprehensive coordinated early intervention services plan in order to meet CDC's submission requirements for your CCS. Okay, I'll move the item as I previously noted. Is there a second?
A second.
The second was Hernandez. And are there any comments on this item? Trustee Smith Folds, go ahead, but please wait for the timer. There we go.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I attended when you did this online, and it was just as good. I think that having the input from the parents and the community and all of that, I think, added to just how great the presentation was. I appreciate you doing the presentation for us now. I think that this is a dynamic plan, and I'm looking forward to seeing the continued implementation. I am complete.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, if there are no further comments, we'll go to the vote. Trust, Student Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk Niana?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
And I am a yes. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are-
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. We are now up to E four, education code 44258 dot three, variable term waivers. I believe this is Dr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, trustee, and President Reckler and members of the school board. The current collective bargaining agreement for United Teachers of Richmond expires on June 30th, 2025. The district and UTR propose to engage in good faith bargaining by sunshining the initial proposals provided to you this evening.
Okay, wait a minute. I just want to correct my, I, I skipped one accidentally. So we're on E three, accept public comment and approve receipt of initial bargaining proposals for United Teachers of Richmond and the West Contra Costa Unified School District. The West Contra Costa Unified School District and United Teachers of Richmond will post the initial proposals of the Board of Education to receive any public comment on the initial proposals and approval receipt of the submitted proposals. So I need to open a public hearing, so. This is a public hearing on the sunshining of the initial bargaining proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond and the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Tonight, the board will conduct a public hearing on the initial proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond and the West Contra Costa Unified School District pursuant to the sunshining requirements of California Government Code, Section 3547. During the public hearing, the focus will be on gathering of input from the public, including district teachers, employees, and parents regarding the initial bargaining proposals being presented. The proposals of this meeting is to inform the public on the topics of negotiation between the United Teachers of Richmond and the district. Tonight's item will proceed as follows. First, we'll open the public hearing. Just did that. Second, the district's negotiator, Dr. Camille Johnson, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, will make a presentation to the board regarding the initial proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond and the school district. Third, upon the conclusion of the presentation, the board will take public comments on this item. The time allotted for public comment is 10 minutes, and each participant will have one minute. And at the conclusion of public comment, board members may ask clarifying questions of district staff. And then the public hearing will be closed. At this time, I invite. Okay, I'm sorry about that. I invite Dr. Johnson to make the presentation. Sorry about that. You were complaining about your glasses. I think I picked up an old spare because I have trouble reading tonight.
Would you like me to repeat?
Nope, I'm fine. I'm hearing okay tonight, and now I'm just not seeing tonight, so.
I'm sorry, it, it's-
Can you, you can't hear? You can make your proposal, you can, you can make your presentation on the bargaining proposals.
Okay. Once again, the, the current collective bargaining agreement for United Teachers of Richmond expires on June 30th, 2025. The district and UTR propose to engage in good faith bargaining by sunshining the initial proposals provided to you this evening. The articles for West Contra Costa include Article One Agreement, Article 10 Hours of Employment and Daily Assignment, Article 12 Class Size, Article 15 Evaluation, Article 22 School Calendar, Article 23 Salary, Article 25 Employee Benefits, Article 46 Staff Development, Article 52 Special Education. The district reserves the right to open other articles as needed during the negotiations and will exchange proposals at the bargaining table. We also resolve, reserve the right to add, amend, or delete proposals during contract negotiations. UTR has brought forth the following articles. Article One Agreement, Article 10 Hours of Employment and Duty Assignments, Article 12 Class Size, Article 19 Safety, Article 23 Salary, Article 25 Employee Benefits, Article 46 Staff Development, and Article 52 Special Education. And they are proposing a new Article 54 International Educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we are going to public comment. As a reminder, it will be one minute per person with a total of 10 minutes. We will alternate between an in-person public comment and then one on Zoom. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Are there any board questions? Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. I will now accept a motion to approve receipt of the initial bargaining proposals from the United Teachers of Richmond and West Contra Costa Unified School District.
I move to approve the receipt of the initial bargaining proposal for the United Teachers of Richmond and West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Motion by Hernandez, is there a second?
I second.
Second by clerk Agnana. Is there any comment on this item? Board comment? We'll put two minutes on the clock. Go ahead, trustee Smith Folds.
Thank you so much for bringing this forward. I think that, um, I'm just going to repeat a little bit of the comment that I said before. I urge us to work together as a team. I urge us to always center students and not adults when we're doing this work at the bargaining table. I urge it not to all be on you, Dr. Johnson. I urge it to be a real collaborative communication among everyone, and I urge us not to go into it thinking that there are sides. There's only one side, and that's the student side. So also urge us not to leave the table until we come up with solutions that we may not all be happy with, but we can all agree to. Because at the end of the day and the beginning of the day, this is about the kids of West Contra Costa Unified School District. And I think that having the most dynamic people at the table, that includes district staff and our bargaining unions, that we can actually move the district in the direction that we all want it to go. Also think that comes with, under the leadership of, of course, a, a dynamic interim superintendent who's been on both sides, right? So again, I don't want it to be size, but I'm happy that we have knowledge in the room, or knowledge that's going to be in the room. So, um, it may not be easy, but it can be done. Hard is not impossible. So again, thank you very much for everybody who's going to participate in this process, and we look forward to the updates. I look forward to the updates. I am complete.
Thank you so much. Seeing no further comments, we'll go to a vote. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Trustee Espinoza, Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Agnana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. The motion and the item carries unanimously. All right, now back to E four, E four, sorry about that. E four, education code four, four, two, five, eight dot three, variable term waivers recommended for approval. Dr. Johnson, this is your item.
Thank you, President Reckler. Ed code four, four, two, five, eight point three allows the governing board of a school district to authorize the holder of credentials to teach departmental classes in grades K through twelve, provided the teacher has adequate knowledge of the subject matter. Thank you.
Okay, that was right to the point. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Great. Okay, we'll go to board questions. Anybody have questions on this item? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve education code four, four, two, five, eight dot three, variable term waivers. I'll move the item. Is there a second?
A second.
Hernandez is the second on the item. Is there any board comment? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Trustee Espinoza, Jr.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Agnana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion and the item carry E five carries unanimously. Okay, we are all done with all of our action items, and we now turn to number F, which is discussion items.
Point of order.
Yes, go ahead.
It looks on my agenda that we need to do E five, acceptance of Contra Costa County.
I'm sorry. Gosh, you're absolutely right. Thank you. Okay. E five, acceptance of Contra Costa County Office of Education Annual Report for Williams Settlement Legislation. Thank you very much for that. I believe Ms. Payne, is this your item?
Good evening, Board, Superintendent, and Community. Wanted to give just a little bit of introduction on this item, as this is the annual report. So the term Williams comes from a legal agreement made in two thousand and four that applies to California schools. This agreement resulted in new laws to ensure that schools provide a certain level of services to students, parents, guardians, and educators. Every year, the county superintendent is required to produce a report about the state of schools that are monitored under Williams Agreement. These schools are visited at least once a year, and at least twenty-five percent of these visits are surprise visit. The main goal of these visits is to check three things. Whether there are enough textbooks and instructional materials, whether the school buildings are safe and don't pose any immediate health or safety risk, and whether the information given on the school accountability, accountability report card, known as the SARC, about availability of textbooks and conditions of school buildings are accurate. The county is required to make these visits within the first four weeks of school. And so tonight, we asked the board to accept Contra Costa County Board of Education Annual Report for the Williams Settlement for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty five. This report provides site-specific reports for thirty-five different sites, which includes nineteen elementary schools, five middle schools, two high schools, and eight charter schools. All sites received a fit, that's our facility inspection tool score, greater than eighty-four percent. One site received an exemplary rating, that is our new Lake Elementary School. One site received a fair rating, and all of our other sites received a good rating. Before completing the presentation tonight, I just really want to thank the county, the district inspection teams, our site leaders, and our maintenance and operations teams who worked really collaboratively to ensure that all of these visits were completed, and then partnered with the county to prioritize a number of these repairs. That concludes the presentation.
Great, thank you so much. Is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Are there any board questions on this item? We'll go with three.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
The concerns listed on the facility inspections are, how are we addressing those? And what's the timeline to make sure that we address those in a timely manner?
Thank you so much. It's a great question. So once the fits are completed, all of those items are turned into work orders in our work order system. And then our work orders are prioritized based on the type of work order. The fit itself has three different categories. And so when it's an extreme deficiency, the prioritization of completing that work is as quickly as possible. There are other items that might be identified in the fit where going in and doing that repair work is best done when we don't have school. So for example, we have a couple of breaks coming up when we don't have school, like in April, when our site, when our staff is working, but our students are not at school, and that provides opportunities to do things like flooring repairs without interrupting instruction. But we do track in our work order system all of the fits. In addition to the fits that are done by the county for the specific set of schools identified by the state, the district also does fits for all of our schools. And so we're able to track and provide data then on completing those repairs. Thank you.
Are there any other questions on this item? Okay, I've got a couple. So I'm wondering if you could help me with how projects get prioritized. So, you know, a water fountain, there was one water fountain issue, which ranked at seventy-three point nine one, which is a four. And there's also an electrical issue that's a seventy-three, you know, they're both in the seventies, and they're ranked as four. Do you look at, is that how you make these determinations? Like, do you look at, okay, these scored in the below? Or how do you rank between two items that are in the seventies?
Excellent question. What you have before you tonight in the annual report is the fit's cumulative score. And there's a lot of additional pages to the fit that identify the location and then the specific item that was noted. The score that gets calculated and provides then a percent score for the fifteen different categories is a ratio of number of items reviewed, and then what was deemed as okay, meaning no deficiency, what was identified as a deficiency, and then what is identified as an extreme deficiency. So if you have an extreme deficiency in any of those categories, your score goes to a zero. So extreme deficiencies definitely are the highest priority and ones that when something's deemed in extreme deficiency, that's something that we're addressing right away. Within that total score, there's individual work orders that we have and different locations for those work orders. And so as those work orders go into our maintenance queue, they're then assigned to the different trades that would then do that type of repair work to then complete the noted deficiency.
Okay, and is any of this in the realm of facilities master plan? Or is this just basic repair type of items?
It's both. It's a great question. In fact, for those that might want to dive in, the auditor produced, the auditor of California produced a report in November of this year where they were looking at the fit reports at multiple districts throughout the state, because it's not a perfect process, but it is a process very prescriptive and code. And it was identifying and talking about some of the ways that the fit could be improved. And it was also talking about this interesting line between repair and new project. One of the things that the ed code for which the fit, the facility inspection tool criteria of good repair states is that that good repair is to the level that the project was designed and constructed. So you wouldn't see a fit deficiency identified for something that was beyond when that school was designed and constructed. And with so many schools that were built at different times, based on the code of that time, we do have kind of a patchwork across our district. But the code in the ed code, it's very specific that what is indicated in the fit meets those categories and is as the school was originally designed and constructed. So for the most part, what you would see come through in a fit inspection, which would then turn into a fit work order, it's going to be a repair of existing versus the installation of something new or an alteration to the site.
God, okay. All right, since there, we are done with questions, we'll move to a motion, and the motion is to accept, acceptance of the acceptance of the Contra Costa County Office of Education Annual Report for Williams Settlement Legislation. Does anybody want to make that motion? I will then, and I am looking for a second on that.
I second.
Okay, Hernandez will second the motion. Then are there any comments on this item from the board? Trustee Smith Folds, please wait for the clock. Go right ahead.
Teacher Payne, there's nothing more difficult than having to clean up somebody else's mess, and you have done that with grace. You have come in and you have been not only transparent, but you have been honest. You have looked at all of our sites through a lens of justice, equity, and following our journey of anti-racism. So I just want to put that out there and to tell you thank you. You are seen and you are valued. And I know more now than I did before you took that seat. So for me, that's what growth looks like, to be able to speak intelligently about something, and you truly are a teacher. I am complete.
Thank you very much. And we will now move on to the vote. We'll start down with our student trustees. Student trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Student trustee Espinoza.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee clerk Agnana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're up to F one, discussion item in the reports, and the item is to receive the annual financial audit for twenty-three, twenty-four. Whose item is that, Dr. Moses?
Mr. Hart, that's your item.
Whoops, shut the laptop at the wrong time. He, uh, we will be joined by Hugo Luna from Christie White, who will be doing the presentation.
Thank you very much for having me here today. It's a pleasure to be here with you all. I'm going to share my screen now for my presentation. So I'll be presenting the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So our responsibility as a third-party auditors is to issue an opinion on the financial statements, basically ensuring that they are in material, that they are materially correct. Not only that, but we're also making sure that they're in line with federal and state requirements. I want to point out that our opinion doesn't address the financial condition of the school district. That's done through your internal presentations with your, excuse me, your first interim, your second interim reporting, your budget presentations. We did, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can issue for the school district. It's the best one possible. And so I'm going to read our opinion as it's listed on the audit report on page one. I won't make you turn to the page. I listed it here word for word. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of the West Contra Costa Unified School District as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, and the respective changes in financial position and where applicable cash flows thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted United States of America. So in order to issue this opinion over the financial statements, we had to perform a series of internal controls, just to list a few of the many that we conducted during this audit. That includes accounts payable department, the payroll department, the deposit process, and what we're essentially doing, we're looking at the district internal control procedures. We're analyzing them. We select a sample of transactions from each department, each transaction type, and we make sure that they're lining up with what the district internal control policy says it should be. We're also looking at, once they, once the books are closed, we're looking at cash to make sure it was accurately recorded. Accounts receivable and accounts payable transactions that are close to the end of the fiscal year. Let's say, for example, in July and August, to make sure that they're accrued in the correct fiscal year. And even when it comes to making account changes over the journal entry process for the closing of the books, we're also looking at the approval process for that. So upon review of internal controls over the financial statements, that's, we issued an unmodified opinion, no material weaknesses, and no significant deficiencies to report. So there is a federal component of this audit, because federal funds are restricted and can only be used for specific purposes, depending on the program. Each state program is selected as a major fund, has a, as a major program, excuse me, has its own set of audit guides, audit procedures that we conduct. So the district as a whole spent approximately sixty-six point six million dollars in federal funds, and we selected two major programs based on what's been tested in the past, based on what we identified as a major, major program. And those programs were the Title One, Part A, and the Education Stabilization Fund discretionary grants, also known as the ESER funds. Those are, those are common ones we tested across the state, and that also needed to be tested for your district this year. And upon the testing of those procedures, we issued an unmodified opinion over federal compliance. No significant deficiencies to report and no material weaknesses. So when it comes to state compliance, it's a, it's an area that it's really hard to not have any findings, just because, as opposed to other areas where we're able to. just because uh, as opposed to other areas where we're able to work with materiality. Uh, when it comes to state compliance, it's very, it's black and white, it's yes or no, right? So it's even one little word, for example, if 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 there was one word that was off on the SARC, it would be a finding. Um, and state compliance is actually, um, it's a wide variety of areas. It's a large umbrella under state compliance. So um, basically, it's uh Comprehensive School Safety Plan, the LCAP, uh, the Transportation Plan. Um, this list seems to be getting extensively longer as the years go by. It seems like there's a new state compliance area um every year. But um, um, that being said, um, there were no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies, but we did have, we did have two findings, which I'll go over in my next slide. Um, so one of them was over instructional materials. And uh, it it's like I said, if there's one little thing that's off in state compliance, we, the audit guide states that we have to have it as a finding. And um, this one had to do with the public hearing, the notice that was posted for instructional materials. It looks like it was posted after the eighth week of school. It needs to be posted before the eighth week. Um, and uh, there's no question cause for this finding. It's not a repeat finding. And upon reviewing conversations with the school district, it looks like this won't be an issue in the next audit. Um, if if the information uh provides is correct, it looks like in twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, the first day of school was August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the public hearing was held um on October ninth, uh, which 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 should fall under before the eight-week period. So should be okay for the next fiscal year. It's always nice when we could put in the corrective action plan that it's already been implemented. Uh, the the other one was related to instructional time, and it was really, it was very close to being compliant. So there's um, there's a requirement for instructional time for for grades one to three. Um, the annual instructional minutes required was fifty thousand four hundred. What we do is we take the lowest of all the school sites, the lowest minutes reported um of instruction. So it would, so the required grades one to three was fifty thousand four hundred, and the lowest one was fifty thousand three hundred and sixty-five. So it was, it was just, it was just under for grades one to three. And for grades four to six, the requirement is fifty-four thousand. And the um, the lowest one that we observed was fifty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-five. So also right there, there was a fiscal penalty for this one of uh one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars five, one, one hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-four. Um, and there is a calculation that that goes with it if, that uh, I can send out if um anyone is interested, the district should have it, but um, I can always send it again. Um, so that that concludes my presentation. Um, and I, again, I want to repeat with the state compliance because it, this, it's, it's, it's difficult to not have any findings because it really, as opposed to other areas where we're working mainly with fiscal department, uh, we're working with pretty much the many departments in state compliance. We're working with the instructional side, child nutrition, um, the facilities department even for some requests. So um, yeah, it's, but um, overall, that's, that's, those are the findings. That's my presentation. If there are any questions, I will take them out.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Is there any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Are there any board questions on this item? We'll, we'll have three questions per board member. Go right ahead, trustee Smith Folds.
Dr. Moses, what strategies are we using to ensure?
I'm sorry, point of order. Can um, can we check if there's a public comment first?
Did you want to speak to this item?
Can you hit the little button so that we can hear you?
Thank you. Yeah, I had a clarification question. Is this the shortfall of attendance in the schools that were being penalized for? How does that, how does that relate to the uh, the budget shortfall?
Thank you for your, for your comment.
Um, that seems to be more of an in uh answer for the, for the internal, um, if anybody wants to step in.
Yeah, we'll, 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 sir, I'm sorry, we'll, we'll address it up here with, with board questions. Thank you. Uh, trustee Smith Folds, do you want to go ahead, please?
Dr. Moses, I know that there are some strategies that you or the district has put in place to ensure that we are compliant when it comes to minutes. Is that just educating our site principals? Is that looking more at um the schedules, site schedules? Can you tell me what strategies, and I know there may be multiple, but what strategies we're using to make sure that that compliance is in place?
Thank you for the question. Yes, this particular finding, this school, uh, you'll noticed, oh, it doesn't name the school. Hmm, I'll name it for you. Um, it's Aloney Elementary School. Oh, it is there. Um, Aloney Elementary School has not changed its bell schedule for the last six years. However, during this year, what happened was there was, there was an additional minimum day for parent-teacher conference week, which caused them to be thirty-five minutes short uh for primary grades and fifty-five minutes short for upper grades, just that one day uh based upon the school calendar. Uh, we try and make sure that schools have a little cushion. However, we can't mandate that. That's one way in which we mitigate this. The other way is that we have um Excel spreadsheets that we use to check the minutes. I've been working with a team to try to figure out how this one was missed. What typically will happen is we will catch the error, we will call the school site and ask them to revise the schedule. I think because this was a longstanding schedule and there wasn't attention paid to the minimum day, this one fell through the cracks. However, I'd also like to to name that the uh fine that's being assessed of a hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars, the state of California will waive that amount for us as long as we make those minutes up. But the rule is we have to make them up twice. So we have to make up the thirty-five minutes in uh the current calendar year and also in next calendar year. If we make up those minutes over the two years, they will waive the one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar fine.
Thank you so much for the clarification and thank you for um ensuring that there is a strategy to make sure that we're catching those things and helping our principals. I'm complete.
Are there any other questions on this side? So can I expand on that just a little bit? So we've had this happen before. Um. Is, is that the normal strategy that the school routinely makes up the minutes in the following year?
That is the strategy to prevent the fine. I mean, of course, we want schools not to make this mistake, but there is a strategy um in order to mitigate the fine. Um, if you'd like me to elaborate on the other situation, I can, but there are other circumstances related to that prior fine.
No, it's, that's okay. I'm just wondering in, in general, if, when that has happened, you know, has that been, you probably don't know, like, is that like standard of how? Yeah, go ahead.
I can name right now that there is a, uh, we're trying to get a fine waived for a specific secondary school. However, in order to add instructional minutes, we also need permission of labor because it's a change of the work hours. We're trying to work that out with the site leadership and with labor in order to prevent that fine. Uh, the state has been gracious in giving us extra time to try to figure it out, but up until now, we haven't been able to uh get the cooperation in order to prevent that fine. So I just want to name that sometimes it's, you know, it has to be a collaborative effort and it has to be agreed upon with labor to add minutes to the instructional calendar per their contract.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, there was a question out here about how does this relate to attendance? Um, and I'll, I'll let you answer it. I don't think it does. I think it relates to something else, but go ahead.
I think the only relation to attendance is the expect, expected annual minutes or the required annual minutes by the state. Uh, this doesn't generate an absence of any kind. It just triggers that we were deficient in the required minutes by the state.
Okay, thank you. Um. No other questions. Okay, good. All right, so no other questions on this. We will move to a motion. And the motion is to accept the Contra Costa County Office of Education Annual. Oh, no, it's, I'm sorry. Oh, it's a discussion item. We don't need to do anything with it. Oh, my God, help me. Okay, so are there any comments? Noah further on this item? Okay, then we're done with this. Gosh, I am really struggling tonight. Okay, we're going to G, comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items. We'll start down here with the student trustees. We'll put two minutes on the clock.
I pretty much got everything else. Oh, that I wanted to say, but again, thank you for this amazing opportunity and experience. And I hope to take what I've learned here and implement it into everything I do. Um, as a lot of you might be aware, you know, I'm an aspiring attorney. I hope to be an attorney one day. I hope to be in politics one day. So this was a great intro into that. Thank you.
Student trustee Espinoza Junior?
Um, just once again, just another repetition of what I said earlier, mentioned earlier. Thank you again for all the support and the love and care you guys have shown us aboard and staff, especially to the cabinet members as well. Thank you all for explaining everything in the most simple terms a high school student can understand and for all the work that you have done as well. Thank you all for your service. And alongside, I can agree with Luke in saying that I do aspire to be an attorney as well, serving this community as well, um, in the highest level I can. And yeah, just thank you for making this the best experience ever.
Trustee Hernandez, do you have anything?
Yeah, um. Today's decision um that we had to make today in regards to the district financial challenges, the solvency plan, wasn't an easy one. While it, it was a difficult choice to make, um, I know that I remain committed to making sure to finding a sustainable solution that is going to prioritize our community, our students, our staff, our educators, and working collaboratively towards a long-term physical stability that our district really needs. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Niana?
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of what um trustee Hernandez just said. I think it's, you know, really hard decisions. Um, sitting here trying to do what's best um for our students. Um, it's going to come with a lot of decisions that might not be everyone's cup of tea, but I think that we need to work together. We need to make sure that we are staying student-focused and making the best decisions with the knowledge of where we sit financially. You know, decisions are going to have to be made, and though they are hard, we are committed to the work um that we need to do to, you know, really thrive and for our students to have the best future possible. Um, another thing, I think when it comes to future agenda items or things that I would want to see is creating messaging and guidelines on immigration support. I think with everything that's going on right now, it really has to be focused. We need to reach out to our state superintendent and governor and get clear direction on how do we move forward? What, you know, what are guidelines that they're setting for districts here in California? And really make it a priority to make sure that we are supporting our immigrant families, that we are safeguarding them, because every time we talk about, you know, loss of revenue, especially on ADA, that needs to be of importance. How do we make sure that our students are coming to schools, that our families are feeling safe having their children in schools and that they are not frightened by what, you know, might not be tomorrow? And and I say that, so um, that's just my thought on future agenda items.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm looking at the clock.
Okay, thank you for that. Swing you around to the side. Trustee Smith Folds, do you have anything?
I think that we should take a moment and recognize that we have made it through the first hundred days of school. The hundred-day school was Friday. We now have seventy-seven days left. In that seventy-seven days, it's going to go, seventy-seven school days, it's going to go fast. Then graduations are upon us. TKs go to kindergarten, or kindergarteners go to first. And then you have your seniors that get out into the real world. To the student trustees, I want to tell you that if you're going to be lawyers, be educational lawyers. Trust me, they get paid. So um, and come back for the district. Um, I think that when we're talking about our fiscal responsibility and our fiscal budget, we have to work together. We can only get there together. So that means all of us coming to an agreement that we are centering students' well-being and centering their uh best outcomes. And that means that we all have to do it together because we have all had our educational experience. It is now time to make sure that they have their best version of theirs. Um, it's not always what we do, but it's how we do it. And I think that if we can do it together with transparency, meaning everybody has to choose to come to the table. They have to choose to have these hard conversations in a soft way. And we have to choose to make our yes our yes and our no our no. We cannot waffle on that and we have to stand together. Uh, again, it's February, it's Black History Month. Understand that Black History is every month. This is just our anniversary where we celebrate it. But if you are not talking about Black history, Black achievement and Black successes in all of your classrooms and on all of your campuses, you are doing a disservice to your students and to the community. We are three sixty-five, twenty-four, seven, and seven days a week. Uh, Mr. Hart, welcome to the board. Welcome to a board meeting. This was an easy one. Um, and then again, we need to make sure that we're centering the safety, social, emotional safety of all of our children, including our immigrant families and our Black students who go to school every day and get called names. I'm complete.
Thank you. And uh, wrapping up, so again, nobody runs for these positions to do what we had to do tonight. Nobody works here to do what we have to do tonight. I'm not sure that the district's message about how fiscally fragile we are uh is resonating. I, I'm, it surprises me, but I think we need to work on that yet again. Um, I want to address uh Mr. Trump and his executive orders. Um, this really has disturbed me in ways that I wasn't really prepared for. We're here in this country. My family is here in this country only by the grace of God. And we were given a life when could have been very devastating. My father was an immigration attorney because he knew what it was like to be in an immigrant family. And we have to do everything we can to protect our students. Um, that also extends to our non-binary families because they have also fallen under Mr. Trump's evil gaze. So we do need very clear messaging about what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, why we're going to do it. And we need to be clear with our families on what they need to do as well. I also want to thank Rob Bonta, who's the Attorney General, who published a very good guide about steps that we can take as a district to strengthen our policies. I already printed everything that he touched on, and we're going to be bringing that to the Governance Committee immediately to strengthen what we have so that we can um give our students the shot. And um we're in this together and we're not going to go down without a fight. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is February twelfth, twenty twenty-five at La Vanya de Jean Middle School, and we are done at nine thirty-four PM this evening. Thank you. And we are done at nine thirty-four P M. This evening. Thank you.